Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll deem the agenda approved. And go down to announcements. Any announcements from members of council for anything upcoming?
Just a couple for the museum. Engagement explorers areas is still on from two to four. Free admission. And on the 23rd, we had the ukulele jam. It was a large turnout, well received. March the second was talking about pop-up cards. And I remember the kid had the pop-up books where they'd open up and the pages. So they're going to be making those. And on March the ninth, model ship building at the museum. Come down and have fun and explore.
And this March break programming as well at the museum?
Yes, it is.
That's great. Any other announcements? Councilor McDonald?
Just wanted to mention that the Where Red Canada for heart disease, the event that was planned for the Atlantic Superstore and was snowed out, has been rescheduled for March eighth, four to six, and that's at the Atlantic Superstore.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Not going forward, but perhaps going backwards. Well, actually, we're going very forward. Never mind. Just for the public's information, the mayor and I traveled to Sydney last week to attend a meeting of the urban mayors of Nova Scotia. So all of the big centers in Nova Scotia, Kentville, Truro, CBREM, and so on, got together and just talking about how we can all collaborate a little more effectively and leverage each other's large urban centers to better our own towns and better Nova Scotia in general. So it was a very productive meeting. Thank you to Mayor Cecil Clark for hosting us and did a very nice job. It was well worth the trip.
Yeah, for sure. It's going to be a fruitful partnership, I think, going forward. So very fortunate there. Any other announcements from members of council? No? All right. Moving on, we're a little ahead of schedule, which is nice, but I think our delegation is here. So we have Colleen Hagan and John Byrd from South Shore Players to discuss a performing arts center in Bridgewater. If you're ready, if you want to just come down to the podium. Just a reminder that delegations have 10 minutes, and that doesn't include the questions we may have.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. I'm Colleen Hagan, and I am the artistic director for South Shore Players. And John Byrd is the vice president for South Shore Players. Thank you very much for giving us your time this evening. We're coming forward with a proposal to establish a performing arts center in Bridgewater as a group that has been around the area for 25 years, performing in various communities. We're very interested in establishing a home, and we like it to be in Bridgewater. We feel that it would be really beneficial to both the South Shore Players and the town. A lot of the people who are involved in our productions and who come to our productions are children and families. We do a big show in December that includes an all-ages cast, and we really feel like Bridgewater is the place to be for that, and that it's something that can bring more culture to the area. So we're looking at the -- we've been talking to Patrick Hertl and looking at the old arena space in Bridgewater, and also speaking with the Bridgewater Farmers Market to collaborate on the use of that space, because it's quite a big building for what we'd be looking for. So our idea is to utilize the upstairs auditorium for workshops and performances and as a space for education and rehearsals, and make that our home base. And over a number of years, develop the downstairs where approximately two-thirds would become a performing arts center, which would then be available as well to other performers. And the other third would become a farmers market, allowing the market to operate throughout more of the year, and also eventually providing a commercial kitchen and a more versatile space for them. So South Shore Players has been around for 25 years. We're actually celebrating our 25th anniversary this year, which is exciting. Some of our founding members are still part of the organization, including John Allen, who's our president. And our mandate is just to provide entertainment in the area. We have expanded our schedule over the last few years from two shows a year. We now do four to six shows a year, and we also do at least two workshops every year on a variety of things, not just for performers, but also for makeup people, costumers, backstage workers, all types of things. And in theater, it really is a community where it's not just actors. We have people who design posters, people who run the lighting boards, who never want to step foot on stage, but are happy to help out in their own way. So it really is a community, and we really would love to work with Bridgewater on making this our community for South Shore Players. What else can I add? So the short-term goal is to use the upstairs auditorium as our performance center. It's smaller than what we've been performing in, but we're very versatile, and we do all different types of shows. And then to develop that downstairs in collaboration with the farmers market and with the town and see where that goes. In order to get the ball rolling on this, what we're looking for is a commitment from the town to engage Axby to conduct a feasibility study for the conversion of the building to see how it might work as a performing arts space and a market venue. And then also to create a memorandum of agreement with the town, with the South Shore Players and the market for the use of the space over the next few years while we work collaboratively on the plan for the development of the main space. Anything else?
I think it needs to happen.
Yeah, so we're -- anyway, we're very, very excited about the idea. When this was brought forward, I think, as a discussion amongst our board about a year ago, everybody was very, very excited at this opportunity. So we hope that you will consider it and that we can move forward to see where we can make this go.
Questions from members of council? Councilor Graves?
Are there going to be renovations required upstairs? It's pretty compartmental, you know?
Yeah, so the main issue with the upstairs space right now is accessibility. So we would be looking to the town to help find a grant for accessibility, which would require an elevator and also ramp out the front of the building. Otherwise, a lot of the work is aesthetic, and having looked at it, our board has all gone to visit it, looking at it from different aspects, whether it's costumes or props or technical requirements. We do feel that it's something that can be fairly easily converted, the upstairs, into a performance space to begin in 2020. So we would use sort of the latter part of 2019 to get it set up and to introduce a stage into there and figure out how all the rooms are going to be utilized. And then in 2020, we would start off our productions there.
So do you pay for any upgrades?
Well, that would all be part of the agreement. We are -- we do have a budget for operation, and so aesthetic upgrades definitely would come under us. We have lighting and sound equipment already. We have some portable staging and people who can build more. In terms of things like the accessibility and if there needed to be any upgrades to the building itself, we would be looking for the town's assistance on that and possibly on, well, definitely on grant applications.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
So is there a cost for the Axby study?
There -- yes, there is, sorry.
And then what's the timeline on them to complete that kind of study?
That's a good question. I don't know if I can answer the second part of that. So it's $6,500 to engage Axby for the feasibility study. And I'm not sure, but I'm guessing it's probably -- we're probably looking at a few months, but I'm not really sure what the length of that is. It sounded like it would -- we could get it done in this year in time to start some initial upgrades at the later part of this year.
Okay. And so some of the items that they would define, I assume, in that feasibility study is the cost to -- for the upgrades and how you might be able to pay for those sorts of things and so on?
Right.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah. And what would need to be done just to get it to where it could be converted and where the bottom part can be converted, because before we bother making definite plans for the downstairs and how that's going to work out, just to know, you know, whether it's worth moving forward on. But it seems like a really ideal location in a lot of ways. The space itself is a great size for the two different ventures to come together. There's up in Willfield, there's an old arena that's been converted into a theater very successfully. And also with the parking around it and just the location of the building itself makes it really accessible for people up Bridgewater to come and take in shows and educational experiences.
Councilor McDonald?
I just want to make sure that I'm correct in my understanding, that what you're looking for is the town to own the space for your use?
That's right.
Okay, so we would be responsible for upkeep, maintenance, and so on?
Yeah, and there would be -- we'd have to negotiate whatever the agreement was in terms of our contribution to the running and operation of the building. So that's something that this study would hopefully help us find out. I know that the building has been using minimal utilities since it hasn't been in regular use. So determining exactly what are the costs of running the building is one step that needs to happen as well, so that we can negotiate that side of things.
The additional component to that is the farmers market is also interested in having that as a location, so I would assume that they'll be part of discussions that go beyond the space need for South Shore Players.
Certainly.
Any further questions from members of council?
Just a couple. $6,500 to do the study, but when I go back up in the first steps, you want an elevator and accessibility. So would the study be done first, and then we proceed to the next step, which would be the elevator and ramp, the feasibilities?
Yes, that's right, yeah. First, just making sure that it is a building that is good to go forward with in this way. Yeah.
Okay.
Councilor Graves?
There was another group in here a while ago that talked about a performing arts center. Are you associated with them?
Do you have a name? I don't believe so. I've been on the board for four years, so...
Was it years ago? Last year, your former mayor, Public Over, was he involved?
Oh, when we did one, we did a performance at the movie theater. Yes.
No, no, but weren't they talking about the space?
I think Carol Public Over was using the area.
Yes, that's right. You're right.
And Walker, David Walker.
Yeah.
Late 2016.
So are you associated with them? Are you talking with them?
No, I wasn't aware of this, actually.
I think that was just a general request from the former mayor as a member of the public, wanting to see the space turned into a performing arts center versus coming from a specific group, if I recall.
Probably wouldn't hurt to have a conversation.
Okay, right.
Any other questions from members of council? This will be generally when we have a delegation, we take the information and move it to a future meeting. While staff and council gather their questions and information, so this will be on an agenda in the very, very near future for debate.
Wonderful. Well, I thank you very much for your time on behalf of South Shore Players.
Thank you.
Hi, John.
That's the only timed delegation we have. Do we have any other members of the public that wish to speak on any other topic? Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you.
Can we leave, Mr. Mayor?
You can.
No, make them stay.
You can.
Not that we don't find it stimulating.
We'd love you to stay.
We're going to put on a performance for you. Stay and watch the show.
I've got a costume for you.
If you thought that was exciting.
I'm got ready to perform at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Before you have the minutes of February 11th, 2019, regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions? Anything to add? No? Hearing none. We'll declare the minutes approved and move down to planning items. Second and final consideration and public hearing for Development Agreement, HSTR Investments Limited, 25 Dominion Street. So I have to declare this public meeting open and that all the statutory requirements have been met. And then I'm going to turn it over to the player, who is -- Ms. Childs is going to go through the presentation.
This is for a development agreement for 25 Dominion Street. And the application is to request the addition of one unit to an existing six-unit residential dwelling. It's located on the corner of Dominion Street and Pleasant Street. The majority of the changes will be within the building, as the owners are interested in converting an existing three-bedroom unit into one one-bedroom and one bachelor. And they plan to add an additional driveway off of Pleasant Street with two-vehicle spaces and an outside entrance at the back of the property. Surrounding land uses to the property are single, two, and multi-unit residential, as well as churches and schools nearby. The property is zoned as restricted commercial, or C6, and the surrounding zoning is a mixture of more restricted commercial, historic downtown commercial, high-density residential, downtown residential, and institutional. And the future land use is designated as limited commercial, which is consistent with the existing zoning. And a development agreement is required for this application because multi-unit dwellings are only permitted in the C6 zone with a development agreement. And with a DA, there can be a maximum of 30 units per acre, which works out to eight units on this property. This property is currently considered legal nonconforming because it already has a multi-unit residential building, but the use was in place before the current planning documents were implemented. So with a DA in place, the property would become a conforming use. The objective statements of the municipal planning strategy envision this area as diverse and walkable, while controlling land use and development in a manner that will minimize conflict between land uses, encourage compact development, and enable development of a range of housing options. The municipal planning strategy has policies regarding general residential and commercial development, and the following were -- or sorry, regard was given to the following: so conflicting land uses, strategic growth, housing choice, residential densification, adequate services, transportation and traffic, and environmental suitability. And these were addressed when drafting the development agreement. The development agreement will limit development on the property to the use of a seven-unit dwelling, as well as the use as permitted in the C6 zone by the land use bylaw. The development agreement specifies an additional driveway on the south side of the property must be no more than 40 feet deep and 20 feet wide in order to accommodate two vehicles side by side while still maintaining a buffer between the adjacent property on Dominion Street. And any changes, deletions, or additions to access points need to be approved by the traffic authority. And any existing trees of three inches or greater caliber must be retained unless removal is approved by the development officer in order to maintain a buffer between the adjacent property on Pleasant Street. And a public participation meeting was held on Tuesday, November 6th, here in council chambers at 6:00 PM. There were no members of the public, but questions were received over the phone from an adjacent property owner. And relevant questions were regarding proximity of the additional driveway to their property and the nuisance associated with that driveway. And staff recommend that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater give second and final consideration to the proposed development agreement and enter into the development agreement regarding the property located at 25 Dominion Street. And just to go over some next steps briefly, a notice of approval would be published in the newspaper, beginning a 14-day appeal period. Agreed may appeal to the UARB, and the development agreement would be signed after the appeal lapses.
Any questions from members of council? Is the developer here?
The applicant is, yeah.
The applicant? Do you wish to speak or anything to address council with?
No, the only thing I would say is that the driveway that we're proposing to put there is actually next to the property that we also own, so it shouldn't pose any issues.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from members of the public? If you just wish to come to the podium?
I do.
If you just come down to the podium, just because we need the microphone.
So I can hear you on the microphone.
If you just let us know your name first, please.
I own the property next door, 31 Dominion, and I'm a little concerned about this parking. Is that the extra parking where it's going to be? It's -- I believe it's going to be alongside my property, my building, or not?
It's not. It's actually going to be on the other side, so adjacent, coming off of Pleasant Street.
Oh, it's coming up Pleasant Street? Oh, that's right. I'm a little concerned, you know, about this, wherever it's going to be.
That was quick, then.
Oh, that's great.
So that addresses your concerns?
Yeah. And there'll be some space that they have to leave vacant as well, that they can't put parking on, that's up to that, up to your law.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Running out of members of the public, so. I don't really have any remarks to make. We've gone through this process, so we're at the end. Is a member of council prepared to make a motion?
I will, Your Worship.
Oh, Councilor McDonald is just ahead of you.
The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater gives second and final consideration to the proposed development agreement and enter into the development agreement regarding the property located at 25 Dominion Street in a manner similar to the draft development agreement dated February 14th, 2019, contained in document 18-149B, and that the mayor and chief administrative officer are hereby authorized to execute the agreement only within the timeframe described in the development agreement. Should the document not be signed within the timeframe described in the development agreement, council shall consider any request to sign the development agreement as a new application and follow the entire process required by the Municipal Government Act.
Can I have a secondary, please, Councilor Thurman? Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is application for amendment for the land use bylaw municipal planning strategy for 200 Dufferin Street. Are you doing that presentation as well? Perfect.
Staff received an application to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to enable a self-storage facility at 200 Dufferin Street by site plan approval, and this would be a site-specific amendment. The property is located near the intersection of Dufferin Street and Exhibition Drive and is zoned as group commercial, or C4, and it has surrounding zoning of group commercial, restricted commercial, institutional, and single-unit residential. Its current use is a warehouse in combination with the Lyman's End Fitness Center, and the proposed use is a self-storage facility in place of the warehouse while maintaining the fitness center. An amendment to the planning documents is required in order to permit the rental space of this property, because rental space is considered a retail use, whereas a warehouse does not have a retail component. So staff recommend that council refer the matter to staff to schedule a public participation meeting on Wednesday, March 13th at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and for staff to complete a planning analysis of the requested amendments.
That was quick.
Yeah.
Questions from members of council, just for the public who may be wondering what that building is. It's the old entire building. For those who may not be going to the gym. Questions?
So I'm a little confused, Mackenzie. So it was retail use before?
With the warehouse?
Yeah, with the store that was there.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
So go ahead.
I was just going to say that would have been legal nonconforming at that time. And then the current, the warehouse is also legal nonconforming because it was in place before our planning documents were enabled.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, so there's no retail component permitted either, so that's why the amendment's required.
So if someone didn't want to do this but wanted to own up a little grocery store, whatever the case may be, it would still need to go through this process as well for retail? Am I missing something? I am missing something.
Yeah, I think it's the self-storage is not contemplated as retail use. So it's a self-storage element that needs to be added in as a permission within the group commercial zone. We've looked at this in terms of looking at adding it as a broad permission, but we're considering this as a site-specific, so only 200 Dufferins. So none of the other group four commercial spaces would be able to become a self-storage use. So it would be site-specific. Given the nature of the building, sort of it's an adaptive reuse of that space, but not something we would necessarily want to see, like the Bridgewater Motel turned into, for example, or something else that's zoned like that. So it's to enable the self-storage component as a retail use.
But only at 200 Dufferin?
Only at 200 Dufferin. So as Mackenzie said, it's a site-specific amendment. So and again, this is just we've received the applications, so we're requesting to go to public meeting and to do the analysis and come back with a recommendation for council on it.
Councilor McDonald?
I don't know if this is considered in an application like this, but access to that location is a little bit weird because of the layout of the property. Is that considered in the change of use?
So access is looked at for amendments. The traffic authority would look at that, so it's not in this stage, but it will be.
Okay.
Councilor Thurman?
Yeah, is there going to be a new building there? Are they going to use existing facilities?
No, it's purely a reuse of the existing building.
Yeah, because they have a company that delivers parcels, GWV or something like that. I just wondered if it's going to add a piece on to it or just for the existing structure, right?
Just the existing structures. They'd use the base and then inside they would add.
No, I'm good with that.
Okay. Councilor Gere?
That was my question, to see if there was any changes to the existing structure.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
You love my questions. So by doing this, do you not therefore set a precedent? You mentioned the Bridgewater Motel as an example, that technically they could file or make the same request?
Yeah, they could.
They could. I guess anybody could.
Anybody could, yeah. So we'll consider.
All of that will be considered in the planning analysis report that Mackenzie will bring back to council.
Okay. Further questions? Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor? Councilor Gere?
Yes, Your Worship. The Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the application for amendments to the MPS LUB regarding 200 Dufferin Street to staff to schedule a public participation meeting in consideration of the requested municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw amendments on Wednesday, March 13th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in council chambers and complete a planning analysis of the requested amendments.
Thank you. Can I have a secondary, please? Councilor Graves, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We have no items of correspondence for information or correspondence for actions. We're down to reports and recommendations, and we have RFP 2018-13, which is external audit services that we bumped from last meeting to this meeting. Do you want to just go over it quickly?
Just briefly. On January 24th, the town received four proposals in response to requests for proposal for external audit services. One response was noncompliant because they were not a registered municipal auditor, so that left us with three. The three proposals were evaluated on criteria, audit firm and staff, audit approach and annual schedule, accounting standards, knowledge and experience, other, and price, and the highest score was received by Grant Thornton. So staff are recommending that the RFP be awarded to Grant Thornton for external audit services for a five-year period.
Thank you. Any questions? Someone prepared to make a motion, please. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I'm with the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, award RFP 20018-13, external audit services to Grant Thornton as outlined in the town's RFP for external audit services, and the response to that RFP for a five-year term ending on March 31st, 2023.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Gere. We already really had discussion in the last meeting, so all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is APA collective agreement. So APA is our policing collective agreement, and I don't know if -- I mean, is there -- okay. I was all excited. The chief was here.
I got backup, I got reinforcements.
Literal backup. All right, I'll turn it over to our CIO.
So this, the collective agreement expires March 31st, 2019, with the APA Local 108, and staff have met with council and camera on a few occasions to get some direction with respect to negotiations. We, the negotiating team, met on January 28th, and we spent a day, not quite a day, negotiating terms of the collective agreement and brought that back to get further direction. So what we have before you tonight is the final negotiated collective agreement as revised. It has been approved by the union members, and it's here tonight for council's consideration and approval. The key changes are highlighted in the staff report. The main being that wages, it's 12.5% over five years, so 2.5% each year for five years, except for the communication. Except for the communication technicians, which will have their salary remain at their current levels for two years and then increase after that, the two point five, and that's because their hours are switching, they're switching from eighty-four hours per week to eighty hours per week. So in terms of the monetary impact, that balances that out. The, uh, in the report, you see what the wages have been, um, as negotiated previously, um, and the last round of negotiation, the percentage increases were higher, so we're down a bit, which is, which is good. There have been some other changes to the collective agreement, which actually save, uh, the town money, and it's approx, estimated to be roughly all things combined, thirty-one thousand that, um, will be saved, and those, those have been done by changing the hours of work for the CR, CRU unit, they're going from a ten-hour to a twelve-hour shift, and there's seven-day per week scheduled for that. K nine's remaining at ten-hour shift, but what that does is it reduces the amount of overtime that has to be brought in when you're, you're working the ten-hour shifts, and it results in less holidays being worked to in, in terms of holiday pay for, for more people by increasing the, the shift. The, uh, communication tech, as I mentioned, they'll be working an eighty-hour week as opposed to eighty-four, which is why their wages will remain the same for two years, and leave time off will be capped at a hundred and eight hours, and after that, it's paid out, and you'll see a little further that change has been made across the board to cap overtime at, uh, leave time at a hundred and eight hours, and that makes it easier for management in terms of scheduling. It results in less calling and backup and overtime, that occurs with doing that as well, so it saves, will save us money there as well. Holidays, this one change, Easter Monday is going to Easter Sunday, and that will actually reduce holidays too for those who work the Monday to Friday, they won't be working the holiday, it'll be on Sunday instead of Monday. And, um, the last thing, the last change in the collective agreement is that, the collective agreement says that the employer may hire two part-time communication technicians, we're changing that to shep. And so what that does is it, it, it increases the number of communication technicians you have so they can cover shifts, so you're not calling people in and paying them overtime, so it'll reduce the overtime requirement as well. In terms of the financial implications, those are noted too over the five years, what the increase in wages does, so next year we'll see an increase in, uh, wages in total of eighty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-one. But as I mentioned, we're having some estimated decrease in costs too of thirty-one thousand five hundred by making those changes to the schedules and, and what we, Easter capping the overtime, those things. The collective agreement has been reviewed by legal council as well, and there's been no concerns raised, um, by our legal council. So the options for council tonight are to approve the revised collective agreement and authorize the execution of the same, and as I mentioned, that the union members have voted on this and approved it, or you can direct that we go back and renegotiate some terms. I would point out to council, remind council that this type of union negotiations is subject to binding arbitration, so we would go to conciliation, and if that didn't work, then we'd go to binding arbitration, and the arbitrator would decide the terms that, um, would be the final collective agreement, and it'd be binding on both parties if we couldn't come to an agreement before that.
Thank you. There's a lot of information in there, uh, questions from members of council? Council Thorburn.
Tammy, that thirty-one thousand that we save on year one, we'll save that on year two, three, four, and five as well.
Yeah, that's a reoccurring thing.
Recurring, yeah.
Good point. Council Graves.
Is that saving reflected in the wage increase number, so is it eighty-one minus thirty-one?
Eighty-one's a total of wages, and then you would minus the thirty-one to get your net, in terms of your net increased cost for this revised collective agreement.
Okay, thanks.
I'll just add, I did a little, little digging, and, uh, this, this increase, I know people are going to go two and a half percent, that seems like a lot, but when I look around at the agreements that were signed in other jurisdictions of our size or larger, um, they're, they are paying a lot more now. I know in our past, we had higher jumps, um, when I read the two point seven five that a couple in the, this province are paying, and, and some other provinces are paying three, three and a quarter, three and a half percent increases, um, knowing what we know about the stresses of budgets and the stresses on policing, um, and seeing that this kind of came to its conclusion quite quickly because of the relationship we have with our local and our, our members, um, I certainly will be, um, supporting a favorable conclusion to this, uh, because I, I see it as a good news story. So I wanted to thank all the parties involved for their negotiations and look for a motion if there's no other questions.
Council Thorburn.
I would so move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the revised collective agreement with APA Local One-O-eight as presented in document eighteen dash zero one zero C.
Can I have a second or please, Deputy Mayor Tanner, further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Uh, next item is pre-approval, pre-approval of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, uh, budget items, there's a couple in there, one is, uh, line painting on the roads, and the other is a, uh, folding machine, um, not for laundry, as I was excited, because I would get one for myself, but it's for, uh, items to go in an envelope. Come on, you know you all want one. Are there any questions about that? I know I had questions about the line painting.
Yeah.
We had a discussion about that. My question might be different, you asked your question first, if you had a question.
Well, it's a huge increase to go from forty-two, forty-three to, up to sixty. That's, that's huge. It's a fifty percent increase, and I'm just wondering if we know why? I know it's, I know it says for increasing costs and to meet current regulations, but still.
My, my question was also along those lines, just not just the increase, but do we need to paint the roads, the lines every year? Like, it just seems like we do it every year, we get half a year out of them, um, we paint lines on roads that I, I think it's pretty straightforward, you know, you're supposed to drive on the right, not the left, do we need a line to, to denote that? Is there, is, it just seems like we're doing it every year, the same roads.
I'm afraid this is beyond the scope of something I can answer. Larry advised that, that we did need the increased amount to meet regulations, and, and apparently costs are increasing as well, but as to the need for it, I, I can't answer any further than what he told me.
I, I would say that the line painting to meet regulations would be, if, if we're required to do that, it would be important to do that just from a liability perspective as well, in terms of making sure that your lanes are clearly marked, traffic, um, has clear direction on where they're supposed to go, even though it may be obvious, it might still be required to do so.
Frustrated when we're told we have to do something with our roads, yet nobody wants to help us pay for our roads, yet if we weren't a town, someone else would be painting the lines on the roads, and, well, we pay for that too, so I, I'm, I'm a little frustrated with this, I don't. Very careful what I say. Council Thorburn, help me out.
I, I do know, uh, years ago, we did paint some lines in the town when I worked with a guy, but, uh, the town doesn't paint every line in town every year, they drive around and they try and pick out the worst ones, so they're not painting every line in town. And, uh, my problem was not so much painting the lines, but the thing that upset me was that they'll go and paint lines, and then we'll come in and tear the street up. And, uh, I thought maybe those places where work was being done would not be line painted until after the work was completed, instead of doing the work, then coming back and tearing the sidewalk up and repainting all the lines again. That seemed to me to be a little bit erroneous, but, uh, maybe it can't be helped.
No, that's a good point, Council Graves.
Just in regard to the current regulations, to meet current regulations, does that mean last year we weren't meeting them, or are there new regulations that just came online?
I'd say it's regular maintenance that we're required to, to meet, so he, their lines are already painted, they're repainting to make them visible, let's say.
I guess the good news is, before the last few years, we didn't pre-approve it, and our lines didn't get painted till October, so when we had all the traffic, uh, they couldn't see where they were going anyway, so I think this is a right move, so I'll make a motion if it's required.
You throw it on the floor.
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater pre-approved the capital project in an amount of eleven thousand dollars and pre-approved the operating budget in an amount of sixty-five thousand dollars as described in document eighteen dash zero one eight one A.
Secondary, Council Fergier, further discussion?
I assume our comments would be referred to.
Yeah.
Yes, please. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you, um, our next item is Parks, Recreation, Culture Advisory Committee citizen appointment, um, just as, uh, the chair of the, uh, P R and C, I am thrilled that hopefully council will approve this appointment, and we can welcome Barb Conrad back to Parks and Rec. She was on it for a number of terms, but, um, her term was up, and so she's been off it for, uh, over a year and missed it terribly, and she was a very active, hard-working member of this committee and would be very much welcomed, uh, back with this group, so if someone's prepared to make a motion, Council Graves?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of staff and appoint Barb Conrad as a citizen member of the P R C advisory committee to complete a term effective immediately and until October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, seconded by Council McDonald, any further discussion? Questions being called, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried, thank you, because the meeting is tomorrow night, now she can come. Uh, and I should have said maybe at the beginning that, uh, Wednesday, April tenth, I hope I have that date right, is volunteer recognition, uh, ceremony in the town of Bridgewater, um, and if you haven't attended one, even if you're not being recognized, it's worth popping your head in and checking that out because, uh, it's a huge crowd. It just blows my mind every year when I walk into that gym at the junior high and see it full of volunteers, and then remember that that's just a small fraction, it's at the most two from not every group that volunteers in the town, and it fills that gym, and so, uh, it's worth, it's worth checking out for sure, so, thank you for that. Uh, building inspection report for January twenty nineteen is in front of you, here we grow again, I was waiting all day to say that. Another year of growth. I'm just running out of the, saying the same thing every month, like, uh, it just keeps getting better and better and better. If you have any questions, then I would ask that you speak to the, uh, the town engineer or to our building inspector. Any comments on that?
No, good news story.
Okay, next item is, uh, RFP twenty eighteen dash zero six, supply and install interview recording system.
Yeah, we're just really closing the loop on this one. Um, the, uh, RFP was issued, and essentially all the bids came in over budget, so what, uh, our, our purchasing policy really, it's below council's threshold in terms of coming to council for award, but the policy really doesn't address the refusal of, of the RFP in its entirety. Normally, we're awarding to somebody, and in this case, we are not going to be awarding, and that's the recommendation, that we, we close the RFP and not award, given the fact that all bids or all proposals came in over budget, and the intention of staff with the police are to, uh, buy the equipment and software and do the project in-house, and that will help them stay within the budget allotted for this project.
Someone prepared to make a motion, Council Thorburn?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater not award RFP twenty eighteen dash zero six, supply and install interview recording system, and request staff to notify all three vendors.
Thank you, seconded by Council McDonald, you've all heard the explanation, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Our next item is Smart Cities Challenge update for February. I feel like we just had this.
Leon.
Leon Scott?
Leon will be here in just a minute, I just called him up from downstairs.
All right, why don't we?
In the meantime, I'll bring his presentation up.
Okay, why don't you do that, and why don't we jump down to the last item, and then we'll go back up and do the, the two before that. Lunenburg County Accessibility Advisory Committee Terms of Reference, um, so this is something we're doing in partnership with the other, uh, units in and around the county, um, uh, at this time, we weren't really going to do it this way, but the other units are doing it, and they're, they're appointing their citizens, their, uh, sorry, their council appointee at the same time they're doing the Terms of Reference, so we weren't going to do it this way, but since they are, uh, I just want to throw that out there, we don't have to do that part today, but if you would like to be the counselor on this committee, um, and want to volunteer, you can, you know you want to do that now, you can let us know now, and we'll put you on that, if not, um, they'll just have to, they'll just have to wait, so. Think about that while we throw this motion on the floor and, and discuss it, someone prepared to make a motion about this committee, Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse and approve the Terms of Reference for the Lunenburg County Accessibility Advisory Committee as presented in document eighteen dash one hundred A.
Thank you, seconded by Council Graves, any discussion?
Question.
Questions being called, all those in favor, those opposed, motion is carried. Does anyone want to be on that committee?
I would not make Council McGinnis, he's not here today.
Oh, that's, that's smooth.
Love it.
That's smooth, I like that. I like that.
I think he actually was on the H family one before.
He was, too, we took, we, we are not on that one, so he's, he's down in committee. So, um, I'll reach out to Council McGinnis and, uh, let him know, his, his best bud. So I'll, I'll ask him if he wants to be on that, and if anyone else wants to jump in because they're jealous of this new role that Council McGinnis.
If he wants to take it, then I'll, I'll do it, but don't him first.
So we'll do that this weekend, and then we'll update. Okay, Mr. DeVried.
Good evening.
Evening, Smart Cities Challenge update.
Sorry to keep you waiting. It's because I was working on the Smart Cities Challenge proposal.
It's taken over my life. We're almost done.
All right, I like hearing that. All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, you have, uh, before you a staff report, uh, monthly staff report, the last one of the series, uh, unless there's a request for one final one after submission, but I think we've pretty much got everything buttoned up here, so I have a few slides to show you to just take you through, um, some of the updates that are in the report. So as we enter the last week, uh, there have been a few changes that have happened in the final hours of the program design work, um, the most, uh, you know, some of the ones that are relevant for, for council's awareness is that the final challenge statement has morphed one more time, um, still the same in spirit, actually a combination of our original challenge statement and our updated one that you received as part of our last report to you. Um, so the, the, the final recommended challenge statement is that our community will lift its residents out of energy poverty, starting by reducing the energy poverty rate by twenty percent by two thousand twenty-five. Reclaims a little bit of the punch from the original statement, not quite there, but best we can do right now, and just as a reminder, the, uh, it, it would be coupled with that original goal of lifting twenty percent of our residents out of energy poverty by two thousand thirty, that's still part of, um, the program design. The other thing that's, um, evolved since the last time we gave you an update is that we've gotten better at articulating what it is that's in a truly innovative about this proposal, and, uh, the main three innovations are summarized in this one chart, this is an updated version of what you have in the staff report, and, um, we used to call it the, the triple engine, because it's really about three powerful forces that are being brought together in this program. The one, the first is a, uh, a program of financial self-investment or self-fulfilling financial, um, systems, so that the, the, the investment dollars are brought into the program because there's active returns that can be brought to, um, both traditional financial investors as well as specialized investors, and that's really quite unique as far as government programming goes, right? Programs that make money essentially are, are, you know, valuable, and, and this is a new way of doing that. The second thing that we have is a coordinated access system, which in the national, um, view plane is important because it's about creating accessibility for those most vulnerable residents and making sure that they stay in the program and don't fall further into energy poverty or other forms of poverty. So that's a powerful engine because it keeps program participants here, provides benefits to them on an ongoing basis, and helps them, um, find what they need and, and, and stay on track. And then the third element that really clinches everything is the connected technologies piece, because, uh, even though we knew, you know, intuitively at the start of this process- Because even though we knew intuitively at the start of this process that this energy program would work very well from a connected technologies perspective, it's only now that we've really been able to articulate that it's actually because of the technology, connected technologies piece, that the other two engines function. So that's why this program makes so much sense as a smart cities initiative. It's really about using data and technologies to fuel these engines and keep the community progressing and movement in the right direction going. The set of outcomes that are around that are the result of that. And overall, what we're doing is we're reducing the community's energy poverty, the possibility that residents are going to fall into energy poverty simply by living here. There have also been a number of kind of final program tweaks to what we're calling the program architecture. One of the things that we spent quite a bit of time doing in the last few weeks is just making sure that this work is explained in such a way that other communities can pick it up as well. So we've tried our best to make the program design as universal as possible, so that whether you're in Winnipeg, you know, White Horse, or, you know, Nunavut, you can use these same principles in designing a local program in those communities. And then what we've done is we've gone from there and explained how Bridgewater is making it its own based on our context here. So there's been a lot of finalization happening there. One of the new pieces as well that's in the staff report is that the program governance and management system has been designed or proposed. And essentially, as an expanded type of municipal service, it should be no surprise that the program governance falls under Town Council and CAO and our departmental structure, but that we have opportunities for a number of advisory roles for community partners. For example, through the Energy Poverty Reduction Program Steering Committee, which we are proposing, becomes a committee of council, a standing committee of council for as long as we have this program. And essentially, it implements basically energized Bridgewater. The energized Bridgewater program can be implemented through this, through this structure here, as well as technical advisory support, which is more of an ad hoc committee, an ombuds person to handle client complaints and challenges, and a client advisory circle to stay connected with clients. And then a management structure underneath that. We've also spent a lot of time working on some of the technical details in the program. I won't go into any of this tonight, but this is just one diagram of a number of illustrations and explanations that we've worked with our partners and our consultants on to really explain how does the program work? Why is it going to deliver those outcomes and those benefits? And especially those financial improvements, both for residents and the community? And that's articulated in these chapters. We have a whole chapter dedicated to technology and a whole chapter dedicated to data and privacy. So those items are much more fully flushed out now. And the preliminary privacy impact assessment, which was a requirement of the program, is also nearly complete. And it was very helpful to design the program hand in hand with that process. The other piece that's essentially finalized is the program economic model, which is the overall program costs over the five years within the smart cities horizon and then the next five years after that, to say, how would we run this program? What would we do with it even when the smart cities funding dries up? So those charts have shifted quite a bit in the way they've looked over the years. But essentially, all we've really just done is refined program costs based on market information that we've been putting into the report, as well as moving some of the program pieces around to better achieve the timelines that we're looking for. So these program costs are now essentially finalized. We are looking at an estimated cost of $46 million coming into the community by 2025 and $90 million by 2030. Overall, big picture, still very much in line with the figures that are in the community, sorry, the energy investment plan, or the smart Bridgewater, energized Bridgewater program. By the same token, making more refined assumptions about where the money will come from, how it will stack through the program. And of course, the important piece around a very, very small percentage of program costs are borne by the town of Bridgewater. What has happened is that that's gone up by 1% because we added an in-kind line item now. Always looks really good to funders if you can add in your in-kind. And so that's the main reason why that's gone up since the last time you saw it. But we have existing staff. We have existing resources. We're counting that toward the program now. Finally, and probably most importantly, from council's perspective, is that all of the program still fits within the $5 million. There's no additional financial risk that we need to bring on in order to run the program. Program operations, program design, program administration, all of that can be handled within a $5 million budget, which in this graph consists of $5 million from smart cities plus the town's in-kind component. Everything else essentially floats on top of that $5 million, right? On top of these costs and basically relates to bringing money into the community in order to do the energy upgrades to homes and, you know, and other community infrastructure. So that's the financing, the financing piece. And the funding piece is separate from that. But we can at least run a program and make sure that we can achieve deliverables based on the $5 million. And tied in with that, we have the first, we have the proposed funding contribution schedule. And in a nutshell, what we're doing with this is we're saying to smart cities, look, we have a great program concept for you. What we need, though, is we need the money upfront. That's because we can't go into debt on this program and we can't really risk incurring project losses. Because if we did, it would come out of the tax base and we don't want to do that. So please provide us with $2.65 million at the start of the project so we can basically do the program design, the refined design and operations. $1.55 million halfway through the program so that we can then implement the, what we call the prototyping stage. And then please provide us with $1.8 million at the end so we can do the last year of the program. And by the way, by then, we'll show you all the things that we've achieved to get to that point. So the total adds up to $5 million, approximately matches. It's slightly more generous than the actual program costs. So there's, we're always staying a little bit ahead of the costs. But that's, we think that that's a fairly competitive and reasonable budget for Infrastructure Canada, understanding that we're a small community. Finally, just a few more updates. We have received over 600 responses from the community-wide survey that went out to all households. That is a 15% response rate. We're very pleased with that. There was a CBC radio and news article that appeared in early February that we've heard from people in the community, or, you know, people were excited to hear that. We have received over 20 letters of support from organizations as varied as the Department of Energy, you know, to some of our local community organizations and even organizations from across Canada. Just today, we got a letter from Van City in Vancouver. Who are basically saying that what you're doing is brilliant. So, you know, we've got some fantastic nationally recognized organizations saying Bridgewater's really on the cutting edge of something big here. Lastly, the program budget will come in on budget with the finalist grant that was provided for this work, this year's work on the program. Moving forward, the final pitch video, five-minute video, will be completed this week. Thank you to the mayor for making multiple appearances on that. It will also feature staff and community partners and participants. And it will also feature Katie Russell, who was the main youth voice in the youth video. So she actually came in and did some additional filming and voice work with us. We will finalize and submit the final application, or else, by March 5th, 2019. The proposal will be posted on the town's website and the Infrastructure Canada website, as will the video. A major debrief event is planned for all the program partners, the consulting team, everybody that we've been working with on March 29th. We'll hold that at the LCLC and it will be combined with an open house event for the public. The video will be shown, et cetera. And then the last two things that are going to happen are that in April or early May, we will receive final written correspondence from the jury. So they're basically going to ask us their last question. They're literally allowed to ask a maximum of two more questions. That's it. So we're going to respond in writing. We have a week to turn that around. And then in mid-May, the finalist showcase is held in Ottawa. And it's going to be a pretty big event. I'm probably not allowed to say publicly, but there may or may not be winners announced shortly around that time period. Allegedly. So it should be, it should be a pretty exciting event and we should think about who should go to that. All the communities will have a chance to showcase or present their work, even though they won't be, they'll have been graded by then. But to showcase them to each other and to the media and so on. So it should be, it should be an exciting event. Oh, by the way, that's May 14th. That's just come in, May 14th. It was confirmed just today. So at the end of all that, staff does recommend that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the design of the Energy Poverty Reduction Program for the purpose of the Smart Cities Challenge as presented in your staff report, including the town's updated challenge statement, which is there. And that we recommend that council direct staff to finalize and submit final application to the Smart Cities Challenge program. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
So you think that the final, the winners are going to be announced in the middle of May? Not at the FCM, two weeks later?
We've heard that there may be synchronicities between finalist showcase events and any such announcements that may or may not be made.
Any questions? We're nearing the end here, folks. This is, well, it's the end, but it's also the beginning at the same time.
This is very exciting and I know you've got a team of, I call them minions, just because they're always going around and they don't talk like minions. Half of what they say I can understand because it's all technical and I don't know what.
It doesn't help that we're all male, approximately same height.
With one eye.
Slightly, slightly under 40.
But they're everywhere here and they're working hard. And you should be proud of your team. And I know I can speak for all of them.
We're very proud of all of them.
We're very excited regardless of what the outcome is because we know that at the end, no matter what happens, we're going to lift 20% of our people out of energy poverty. Either super quick or over a longer time period, but it will happen. Any, anyone have any questions to prepare to make a motion?
Councilor Fergier?
Yes. The Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approved the design of the Energy Poverty Reduction Program for the purpose of the Smart Cities Challenge as presented in Document 18-097G, including the town's updated challenge statement that our community will lift its residents out of energy poverty, starting by reducing the energy poverty rate by 20% by 2025. And further, direct staff to finalize and submit the final application to the Smart Cities Challenge program.
Thank you. Can I have a second or please? Deputy Mayor Tanner? Ready for the question? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you, Leon.
Thank you.
Our next item, Transit Pre-Budget Report and the Cost of Permanent Operation. I'll turn it over to our Director of Planning.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So the journey to where we are today began about three years ago when the mayor for the town of Yarmouth came and stood in this room in February of 2016 and talked about what their experience was launching public transit as a new municipal service. And then council started down by directing staff to put the wheels in motion, do a feasibility study to see if such a service could be at all useful and of benefit to the community of Bridgewater. And that feasibility study suggested that there was a need and potential for a successful service and estimated about 1,600 riders in the first year of service. We met, sorry, 16,000 riders in a first year of service. And we met 16,000 riders in eight months of service when we launched in September of 2017. And to date, we've had over 37,000 riders since. Our service has been growing. So weeks four to seven of 2018, we had an average of 58 riders per day. And weeks four to seven of 2019, one year later, we're averaging 97 riders a day. This picture here is on the free rides to celebrate the town's 120th birthday on February 14th of this year. I was talking with a few of the councillors before the meeting began. And I understand that there was a number of people on the bus that day. Not only were they there for the free cookies that were being handed out, but also just to try the service for the new times. So we're still attracting new riders. We're still attracting new people to the service. And yet we've also attracted a very dedicated core of riders who use the service regularly. We hear from those that use the service regularly how it has transformed their lives, how it has enabled them to get to work, to get to services, to get them out of the house and around other people. Some of the unanticipated, you know, great stories that we've heard are things around how it's been connecting youth with seniors in the community. A lot of the daycares are now getting out to things that they couldn't get to before and are going and have developed partnerships with places like Hillside Pines and things like that, which has been really wonderful. We're also hearing anecdotally that people are wondering about what council is going to do with the future of the service because they're thinking, they're making plans. Would they move here if the bus is here? Things like that. So we have brought forward a report tonight to sort of go through what some of those costs might be with making the service permanent. So as I've said, ridership has been increasing. It's nearly doubled what it was same time last year. We have really blown through those benchmarks that we set for ourselves and that were set through the feasibility report. We've also blown through some of our projected budgets. So we projected a revenue and we've exceeded that revenue. We exceeded it in January. We're attracting new riders. We're attracting more dedicated riders. And we're hearing a lot through the smart cities work, actually, there's been a lot of discussion around transit, around mobility, around how people are getting around and what impact that has on their experience in energy poverty or getting out of energy poverty. And so we've heard that there is the need for the bus. But at the same time, it is a cost. It is a new service. At the last meeting that we talked about transit in December, you asked for a comparison to Yarmouth. So these are total ridership numbers from 2018. The blue is the town of Yarmouth's service. The red is the town of Bridgewater. You'll notice that we, the town of Bridgewater, have several peaks and valleys. But what's interesting about it is that every time we do something to try to get new people on the bus, those new people stay. So this is March of last year where we had free rides for youth during March break. And we saw a massive boost to our ridership that month. And it stayed. It never dropped back to that February level. It did drop down a little bit. But then in the summer, in July and August, we saw again another large boost to our ridership. And in the summer, we introduced a family rate, $4 for a family to travel. So that's a maximum of two adults, five people in total. We also had a large number of day camps using the bus to get around town. We also had a lot of heat, so it was hard for the young kids to walk across town to access the outdoor pool. So the bus was getting people from the town's day camp at HB Studios over to the outdoor pool. I know that Small World Learning Center was using it for their day camps. A lot of the other day camps, smaller groups like On Top Dance Studio was using it to get around, to get to the pool, to get to other places and access our services in and around town. So it really got the youth out and about throughout the summer. We can't quite, and Mackenzie and I have taken a look through the data and we can't quite figure out what happened in September. But in September, we did introduce new fares. Again, we introduced the unlimited monthly passes. We maintained the family pass and then September jumped back up. And so we've been seeing a steady increase in ridership since then. So we have been outperforming Yarmouth. The town of Yarmouth grew their service by 35% in 2018. We grew ours by 52% in 2018. So they do have a year on us. We don't expect that our growth will continue at such a rate. It will plateau at some point, but right now, it's certainly showing strong growth. And as we plan new promotions and plan other things to attract new riders, it seems to always help us maintain a core element of those people who try it out. So the operational costs included in your council report was a breakdown of the pilot finances as well as the this year's projected expenses. So when we embarked on transit, we budgeted and the cost was based, was expecting to cost about $17 per rider based on the numbers that the consultant said we may achieve. We managed to deliver that pilot excluding, not including, the funding that we received for it. Just straight up on the costs and revenues. We managed to provide that service at nine dollars and twenty-two cents per rider, so less than half of what was we budgeted. And then we've carried that through in the demonstration project this past twelve months. It was budgeted at approximately twelve dollars and ninety-six cents per rider to deliver the service. And if all things go as how they were by the end of January, we'll deliver closer to six dollars per rider. And that again is exclusive of any of the funding that we have received because we did receive a $200,000 grant from the Provincial Department of Communities Culture and Heritage to operate the service for the demonstration year. So that's really good news on our ridership. But we have a decision point that we need direction on. So we know the service is having a positive impact in the community, but there's no more operational funding available. The only funding that we have available to us are some capital funding programs. The Provincial Transit Assistance Program, PTAP, we will be eligible for regular annual capital funding that can go towards new bus purchase, can go towards bus shelters, can go towards capital investments in the transit system, not operational. There are some federal programs. Right now, we are not eligible for that, but hopefully in the next round of negotiations for funding between the provinces and the federal government, we would be eligible. Our current buses, we started this service with two donated buses from Halifax Regional Municipality. Thank you Halifax, we wouldn't have gotten it off the ground without them, but they are aging assets. They are coming towards their end of life. So as we spoke in December, a new bus is required. We also know that the bus that we have, where you have to go up several steps, it is wheelchair accessible through a lift at the back, but we don't know who we're missing from the service because they can't get up those few steps onto the bus, but they don't have a wheelchair or a walker that can be secured on the lift. So we know that there are people who aren't using the service because of the type of bus. So at the December meeting, December 2018, council did give staff direction to look at a low-floor kneeling bus that would be accessible to a wider range of people, but the approximate cost of that is $600,000. So that is a large capital investment. We have made a funding request to offset that new cost. We asked for $400,000 from the provincial government to help us towards that purchase. And the response from them is, is this a permanent service? If we help you, you know, purchase a new bus, is it just for another year? Or is this going to be an ongoing service that you provide? And that's something that staff can't answer, but council will need to. So what would it require to make our transit service permanent? Bus replacement, both now, replacing at least one bus. We need two buses to operate those, that if one is in the shop for scheduled maintenance or for unexpected maintenance, the service can still run, which is why we have two buses. So they both eventually will need to be replaced, but we're just focusing on one for the time being. There is a need for a facility space for the pre and post-trip duties, the bus storage, cleaning, et cetera. Right now, it's certainly, we have been very fortunate with the arrangements that we have at the fire hall. We park the buses outside, the buses don't need to be parked inside. But it does make things difficult in inclement weather. In storms, whether it's rain or snow, in freezing conditions, it does add an element of challenge to the pre-trip duties in the dark, with ice underneath, or, you know, pouring rain, et cetera. So we have a small space in the basement of the fire hall that we use for staff things and for supplies. And then we just use the back of the parking lot at the time being. A facility would make it easier for staff to carry out their duties. The positions are all term positions, so if it becomes a permanent service, those positions would become permanent positions. And the responsibility for transit has remained within the planning department, but it would transition to engineering and public works because it's more of an operations than planning type of activity. Some of the financial variables in considering whether to make it a permanent service or not are around the funding. So as I've said, we have requested $400,000 from Communities Culture and Heritage. We will receive $25,000 from the Provincial Transit Assistance Program each year. That is the set amount that the Department of Municipal Affairs has allocated for small-town transit services. PTAP is normally based on a formula about ridership and distance, how many people are you reaching with your service, but they've set just a set amount for communities like Yarmouth and ourselves. And as, within your council package, you did see the letter from the Minister of Municipal Affairs. When they gave us the PTAP funding in 2018, they did ask about the continuation of the service. And as I've said, there's no further funding programs that we've identified for operations or facilities. So what impact does that have for us? In your report, I go through six different scenarios because we have the one variable of whether we have bus funding or not. So are we paying a full $600,000 or are we only having to finance $200,000 because we've gotten a grant? And then there's three other variables around a facility. Do we operate at the status quo without a facility, using the back of the fire hall? Do we find an alternative facility, so something smaller, built near the current public works facility? Or look at renovating an existing town-owned building to accommodate transit? Or there's also something that will be coming forward in the capital budget around a shared facility, a new purpose-built for parks and transit? And each of those have increasing levels of cost, which would all need to be debt-financed. So this is really terrible to see on the screen now that I see it up here. But this is the five-year estimated operational budget that was included in the report. So year one being years nineteen, twenty, next fiscal year, up until year twenty-three, twenty-four. Going through the revenue, we've done very well with our advertising and sponsorship revenue. We're estimating a modest increase in that. We don't want to cover every window of the bus with an ad because we want people's comfort being on the bus, being able to see in and see that people are on the bus is important. And we are anticipating an increase in ridership. So we do have down at the bottom of the table, an annual ridership estimate, so estimating a fifteen percent increase from this year to next year. Ten percent increases for years two and three, and then five percent increases. As I've said, we will plateau in who we can reach on a one-hour unidirectional loop. Year two is where the cost would really come in. So this is, just going back, sorry, of these six scenarios, the budget that was on the next slide is scenario six with the maximum amount of where we would get no grant and we would build the most expensive facility just to show the largest impact. It would all go down from there, luckily, depending on what scenario. I've also included in the budgets, always assuming that we will get our $25,000 from the PTAP program. And as you can see in a scenario six where we did not receive funding for a new bus, but proceeded with a low-floor kneeling bus at $600,000 and proceeded with a new shared facility of which the transit portion would also be approximately $600,000. The cost per rider would be almost six dollars for next year because there'd be some small increases to various elements of the budget, but it would jump to nine dollars and twelve cents and then would go down once the principal and interest started getting repaid. So what does that really mean? So we took a look at the tax rate impact. So one cent on the tax rate right now would raise sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars in revenue across all types of taxation, so residential resource and commercial properties in town. So Table Three in your report talks about the incremental impact from year one to year five of the proposed budget for all six scenarios, where year two has the largest impact because that's when any of the capital investments would be debt-financed. So a new bus and the current level of service, so status quo, no facility for transit, represents approximately a two-point-six-one cent of taxation. Okay? So that's how to read this five-year incremental tax rate in cents. Wanted to make that clear. So all these numbers here are talking about cents on the tax rate. The base cost is approximately two-point-six cents of taxation. Debt financing the various capital investments, depending on the scenario, would then add a range of point-one-eight cents to two-point-oh-two cents more to the overall cost of transit. That's what you're reading in year two. And then it changes from there. And I'll look to Dawn to help fully explain because she's the one who told me how to do the math here. Between years two and three, three and four, et cetera. But year two would be the big year where it would see a significant additional increase in pressure on the budget because of the additional increase in costs associated with debt financing a new bus and a new facility. So there are three options for consideration because the continuation of transit is a service level increase. We're talking at, so far to date, we have received significant operational funding to run the pilot and to then do this demonstration project. We do have $150,000 in a transit reserve that council established last year at budget time. And we do have a new municipal service that we've been offering for the past eighteen months that we know is having a significant and transformative impact in the lives of those who use it. So there's a decision point around what do we do moving forward? And the impacts of some of these are included in the report as well because if it is not a core municipal service, then the funding opportunities do go away. So not to, that's just the fact of the matter is that those aren't eligible and that's why that letter from Municipal Affairs was included in the package because they made it very clear to us and we wanted to make sure that you have all the facts in front of you. It is being used and we anticipate if it's continued for another year, even in a demonstration phase, it will be used absolutely. We know that from the people who are in the, on the bus daily, we know that from the drivers. The third option, of course, is and always has been that this was a lovely experiment, but it's time to discontinue the service. So those are the three options which we seek direction from council this evening.
Okay. Let's start with questions. Councilor Graves?
Have you talked to the Social Center for Education in regards to their bus facilities? About shared space with them in order to reduce costs and share?
We have, but we don't have anything concrete at this time, but we are exploring that.
You are exploring that, okay.
Absolutely.
Councilor Graves again.
As you know, I've been on the bus like fifty times. And it's amazing when I'm on that bus, I talk to an awful lot of people and the impact that this bus is making on them is, as you say, is transformative for many people. And I fully support the bus, I'm totally for it. I remember down in Yarmouth, when I went down to see their bus system, they do have a bus that lowers the floor, but it's certainly not a $600 or a $600,000 bus. But the floor does lower, so I guess what I'm getting at is that there are other options out there and that you may want to look at the Yarmouth bus as an option in terms of reducing costs. It's an expensive service, but I think it's a required and a needed service. And I think everybody knows that the town of Bridgewater, we've got the lowest income in Lunenburg County. And we've got some of the highest number of people that are in core need of housing or living in, with low, very low income. And something like this is a real, it's sending them a lifeline that could, that has changed their lives. And when you go to the Bridgewater Mall, it's amazing, you see all these people sitting around in their brand-new couches, right? And there's these groups and they've, I never saw them before until the bus came. And now, now they're there and it's, it's, it's good, it's good. So thank you.
There's things that we always miss in these reports because there's no way to put them in the report. And that is when we speak to people who move to this community, I know you mentioned it, they move here because of the bus. So whether voluntarily or involuntarily, they've lost access to their car. And the only way to remain mobile and independent is to move into town and to be able to access transportation by going on the bus. Now, those are net new taxpayers. Those are net new citizens that contribute to the economy. But when you, when we have to look at a budget document, we only get to look at revenue and expenses that are directly impacted by the bus. So if one person moved to Bridgewater and bought a house and pays $3,000 a year in taxes, that they moved because of the bus, in my head, I have to give the bus some of the credit for that. And I know that most, if not all of you, have spoken to people who have moved to this community because of the bus. We know that there are people who are now accessing better employment because they can reliably get to the bus. And I know I've spoken to one individual who had to bounce between, do I pay for my car or do I pay for my rent? And when the bus came along, that decision, it was made. It was no longer a question. Similar to the energy poverty, right? Do I pay my mortgage, do I pay my power bill? It was the same question but for transit and the bus answered that question. How much is that worth? For this young lady, it's worth a house. It's her housing. Live in your house or live in your car. Now that choice doesn't have to be made. And so when we talk about whether we make the service permanent, it's obviously about a bus, but there's, it's about, it's more to me, me, about the people who ride the bus. And I look at the confidence that the provincial government has had in this and all the other departments that have helped us with this. And I look at the numbers and the cost per ride and all those things are just lining up. And in my head, I just look at the numbers beyond the social component of it and it's more than manageable for us. So I hope that council will be making the motion to make this permanent. I will add one thing just because I did look at some other statistics when I was looking at the police contracts and stuff like you mentioned earlier. Our recovery rate for our fares, so getting it to that six dollars, as a percentage of operating, we do a better job and run a more efficient transit service than Boston, Miami, LA, Sydney, Australia, and Milan. Their recovery, their fare recovery percentage is really, like, Boston's is really below ours. You can have a Christmas tree. But those are well-established, large-city public transit systems. And when I look at the numbers, if you want to just be a numbers person as the public is watching, you just want to be a numbers person, we're already ahead of them. So I think that's an important takeaway and we just started. We're just getting one of them, so that's my little spiel. Councilor Thurman, I think you have your hand up.
A few questions for Dawn. I'm just looking at if we say the bus, for instance, is $400,000 or six as was in the slide. And that bus is two-thirds funded. So if it's 600, we get four, that means we owe two. Does those expenses in your operating budget, where you're showing debt charges of $55,000, that must be on the full amount, is it?
Yes.
Will those be lowered if we get funding?
So that is 600 less than PTAP, isn't it?
Yeah, so, okay. I will go to this difficult-to-read table here.
Yeah, those three lines here.
So this, these are debt charges, yes, that's based on?
Full amount.
The full amount, so that's the principal, fifty-five, because we're assuming, we've already received $25,000 in PTAP funding. We know that we would be, with a permanent service, we would be eligible for another $25,000 come April 1, 2019. So we would have $50,000 to put towards the principal right away. So we would only be debt-financing $550,000?
And we're assuming a ten-year venture?
Yeah.
Because of the useful life of a bus, you're probably, it says, Municipal Affairs says ten to fifteen years.
But my question was if we get some provincial funding, that comes off that amount.
I'll tell you what that looks like.
So it's the worst-case scenario.
This is the worst-case scenario right here.
That's the worst-case scenario. So when I'm looking at the best-case scenario.
So the best-case scenario is $400? Well, that's a good question. I can flip it up there in just a minute, but I can also tell you. So with a $400,000 in funding, it would be fifteen thou, instead of $55,000, it would be fifteen thousand because we would only be, oh, no, sorry, it would be $20,000 because we're financing $200,000 instead of $400. So the interest looks significantly less.
All those three numbers would be lower.
Yep, all three of those numbers would be lower, yeah. And then again, the principal number-
And then again, the principal number here and the interest related to a bus facility would also change based on amount. Yeah.
Okay. Next question, Dawn. LCLC tax.
I just told her how to do it.
When is that finished? Did we know?
It's pretty much at the end of the, I don't have it on me, but it's pretty much at the end of the twenty years because, remember, council lowered the rate to six.
So how many more years do we have to go? Do you remember?
Fourteen.
No, it's not that long.
I think, was it two thousand and eleven, and it was twenty years?
Okay, now, I won't have to worry about that.
Two thousand and eleven.
Two far in the future. But I think the point is, I wanted to ask, because if we can get some funding provincially or even additional funding federally, the scenarios are going to look so much better. This is the worst-case scenario, so. And at the worst-case scenario, you're going to have a two-point-three percent tax increase. Is that correct?
Two-point-six. So it's right here.
Two-point-six.
Two-point-six.
Six-one.
So the best case, where we have no cost incurred for a facility and we have funding for a bus, is this line number one.
Right.
So it would be two-point-six-one cents in year one with a further point-one-eight cents in year two, and then going down from there.
Yeah, okay. No, that's great. It's no greater for me. I know where I'm going. I'm taking the bus. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for the explanation and doing it in the tax rate. I like that idea. And I know with the report, projection for the bus lifespan was ten years, and we've been quite fortunate to have two buses and gifted from HRM. I guess when you did the projection for year, as far as out as year five, were you considering the replacement of the second bus in this scenario at all?
Not in the first five years.
Not in the first?
We're assuming, and I've talked, I'm not a mechanic, so.
Yeah, okay.
But I have talked with Larry about the fact that, you know, we do have, if we have a new bus, then we have the two buses that, you know, I figure one would be harvested for parts.
Okay, so just wondering.
To keep the other one going, so we would always have a backup.
It wasn't projected to purchase another additional bus?
Not at this point, no.
In that five-year window?
Not in that, that window. And we're always looking at the opportunities for, and alternatives for buses. So as a backup bus, we might consider something different. I might consider, there'd be second-hand options, there'd be other things, so we could look at how we could reduce that.
And just one final question, with the accessibility grants, I'm sure you looked at all that for, with the bus?
We are looking into, unfortunately, the federal government makes it very difficult to know when those grants will next be available and/or how much might be and what qualifies. So when I looked at all of the various federal government webpages, I couldn't find any good information to, everything's closed for the time being, and I don't know when they reopen. So I have asked some contacts to try to get me more information because I think accessibility is one of the main reasons why we're looking at a low-floor kneeling bus and that we would absolutely apply for any and all other funding programs that we could possibly access.
Thank you.
I just want to let council know that the first year for the special-purpose tax for the multipurpose center was eleven-twelve, and the payout the last full year is twenty-eight, twenty-nine. There'll be about a half a year in twenty-nine, thirty. So it's quite a ways.
Debbie Mary Tanner.
Jessica, there's no revenue line item for potentially selling the used buses?
No.
Is that, is that an option? You just commented about parting one out, but?
Probably for not very much money. They were donated to us.
Yeah.
So they weren't worth a lot, and the ones that didn't get donated to an organization that were sent to auction by Halifax Transit yielded very little in return.
Okay.
So we didn't consider that at this time, but that, of course, is something that we could consider.
Okay. And then how did you arrive at the maintenance and fuel line item? Because it seems strange that in year four, five, the amounts go down quite considerably. Like, normally I would expect those amounts to go up.
Yes. Sorry, I just need to?
I don't need detail, just curious why they would go down in four, five?
They went down, it was a little bit of looking at the first couple of years, getting to, when does the new, trying to project when a new bus would arrive, because it's not going to come in year one. It'll probably come closer to year two, year three.
Oh.
And then getting the second bus into shape wouldn't happen overnight either.
Okay.
So it was sort of projecting that, yes, they were, it's a little bit of guesswork.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, okay. So we can't get a bus, takes, they say six months to even build?
If it's brand-new, it takes six to nine months.
Yeah, okay.
And just going back to Councilor Graves' point, you know, when we made the motion to direct staff to start looking at a low-floor kneeling bus, we went to the highest number. Council can reel that in as much as they want based on, like, I would, I would fully expect staff to come with, here are your number of options, starting with the cream of the crop and working way down, and till we get to a compromise of a dollar figure and a bus that is what our town needs.
Okay.
I just want to remind, because I already had an email last time we did that, said, you're going to buy a half-million-dollar bus? No, it's one of the options, many options. Councilor McDonald.
Have you had any conversations with the taxi operators in town and Senior Wheels about what the impact has been for them?
Not recently. Okay. Yep.
I had a conversation two weeks ago with an owner of one of the larger taxi companies who spoke positively about the bus. Because he knows that it's not point-to-point, so he still has his regular customer base that needs to get from an address to an address. And he also knows that he has people who have given up a car, ride the bus, and on certain days can't ride the bus, now they don't have a car, so they use the cab. So he didn't have anything negative to say, but that was only one operator.
Another question, where we changed our purchase policy, would or could we be looking at maybe going to auctions if they have some buses for sale where we may be able to?
Absolutely.
Would that be an option that may be considered?
Yep, that would be an option as well as looking, there is a local, local to the Maritimes dealer who specializes in finding buses, second-hand buses, and refer buses as well. So there's other options.
And when we were in Sydney, we spoke to a municipality that buys their buses from, I want to say St. Catherine's, Ontario, because they, I got the impression they got rid of them quite soon.
Yeah.
They circulated through their inventory quite quickly, and so the buses were used, but very gently used because they seemed to get them with years of life left on them. So again, there's, there's a ton of options to make those numbers change. Councilor McDonald.
Is there any possibility or benefit to knowing when other transit services, I mean even maybe Senior Wheels because they'd be looking for accessible buses as well, to knowing when, what their replacement schedule is, trying to be on similar or the same replacement schedules and purchasing more than one bus at a time? Is there any benefit?
Yep, yep. There's been, our transit coordinator has had lots of conversations with the other local transit services, not with Senior Wheels because we're looking for a bigger bus. So he's been looking to King's Transit, CBRM, HRM, but he's in regular discussions with them, and so that would be a possibility, yes.
Great.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I thought so.
Ready for the motion?
I'm ready for a motion, please.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I would move that town council with town of Bridgewater to direct staff to include transit as a core municipal permanent service in the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget.
Second, please. Councilor Graves, we've had a robust discussion. You ready for the question?
Sure.
All those in favor? Those opposed?
Your ear is carried. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great stuff.
It's great.
Yeah.
What a great note to end this meeting on.
Yeah, really.
No further visits come before council. Motion to adjourn, please. Councilor Thorburn, seconded by Councilor Graves.
Thank you, adjourned.
We have an in-camera meeting to do a contract negotiations in the next room, please.
Well, that's good. I think that's great.